All right, welcome everyone. Tonight's planning board meeting, it is February fourteenth, happy Valentine's Day. We have four members of our committee with us here tonight. Myself, we have Justin Allen, Chris Drew, and Preston Juskovic. We also have a public hearing this evening. We, it's a continued public hearing from. Not even sure when the first date of this was, Jack, do you remember?
It was a while ago, you've only technically had two hearings. This would be the second.
This is our second continued public hearing for fifty Main Street. I'll hear a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion.
Excellent, roll call. To enter in, Justin.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Preston.
Hi.
And I say aye. All right, um, let's resume where we left off. I believe you guys were going to give us a quick presentation this evening.
I think that is where we left off. We did have a meeting just a few weeks ago, although we didn't have a quorum. However, if we, if you might recall, we did start the meeting back in December. And there was a, there was a presentation provided by myself and the applicant. That gentleman is Roland Dejolay, he's with us. And the site is fifty Main Street. And since our initial filing, we've submitted a much more cohesive plan that I believe has been circulated to the members. And that plan is a very good illustration of not only the site, but a footprint of the, the buildings that are located there. And a particular interest, of course, would be the access. And so if we take a look at that aspect of the plan, you will see that there is a quite suitable existing access. That access doubles as a right of way to two residences to, I believe, the northeast portion of that plan. The, the next important feature of the plan is the vegetative growth. And of course, that is a concern not only to the board members, but to, not only to the board members, excuse me, please. Hey, I can't, I'm on a board meeting, okay, Steve just left. Pardon me, please. So the, the plan illustrates or depicts where the vegetative growth is. Not only the existing vegetative growth, but the proposed vegetative growth, which the applicant would install by, for the purpose of visual barriers. The next, I think prominent concern is about the use of the property. And I think the, the primary concern would be whether there'd be any trash in these containers and all of the problems, of course, that would, that would present. So that issue has been discussed not only with the planner, but with other department heads. And the assurance is that there would be no, that these would be empty containers. They would be temporarily in storage for distribution to the various customers. There would not be any consolidation of trash or any type of debris. Nothing will be brought into the town by, in that regard. All of the disposal takes place at the licensed facilities in Rhode Island. The commissioner of health was also concerned about what type of preparation these containers would undergo at the site and whether they would be subject, say, to sandblasting or to painting. And because of that, they would want to know more about runoff and, and whether or not there would be any mix of chemicals or paint in that runoff. So they will, from time to time, that is, the dumpsters be hand painted. They would not be sprayed. They would be painted, if I'm correct, in the out of doors as opposed to the inside, in, inside of the building. The plan also illustrates not only the storage areas, but if you will, the, the office area and where the available parking is. In addition to that parking, there are some service vehicles. If I might use the term, like a flatbed, which moves these containers to the various customer locations. Those containers are of various sizes. And if I may defer to the applicant, again, his name is Roland, to just explain what type of containers these are. You know, some people think of a dumpster as in a twenty or thirty yard dumpster, which is quite large. Other times, we think of a dumpster as one that has a lid that opens when the customer perhaps might throw out their refuge or their debris. So Roland, have you been able to follow me so far?
Yes.
Would you address the concerns of access, number one? Number two, the natural plantings there that are suitable for a visual barrier? The intended plantings, again, for that same purpose? The nature of your business and where the storage of these dumpsters are? The character, the type of dumpsters and how they are transported to and from the site and the vehicles that are being used, as well as the day to day vehicles that you might use for just commercial, your own commercial purposes?
Yes, sure, glad to. So basically, in the back portion of the plan that you guys had, the larger storage area, left side, there will be some, the, there'll be an access point there to store some machinery that we do have and mainly use it for myself, so it doesn't go out too often. And then the right side would be containers. The containers would be roll off containers ranging from ten, fifteen, twenty, and thirty yard containers that are empty, waiting to go out for service, as well as permanent base containers, which are going to be two through ten yards in increments of two, so two, four, six, eight, and ten, that are either A, need to be repaired, or B, brand new, waiting to go out to a service contract for a new customer. That's the, that's the rear portion. In front of the building, there's going to be some, the, the parking there would be for service vehicles, which can be roll off hook lift container trucks, as well as the railroad packers, which pick up the weekly trash. Nothing is brought back to our facility as it is now, nor would it be there. Everything is dumped at the end of the day. Things are brought, the trucks are brought back clean with no traction. That's that area. As far as the painting, containers are repaired and painted in that building is what we're trying to do. Nothing is sprayed, we've never sprayed containers, we've always done hand roll or painting lasts longer as we found. And as far as the refu, the planting and everything like that, there's a buffer between the back storage yard and the access road of woods, which is pretty predominant, as well as I, as you can see in there, planting more abrevites, the green giant ones, which grow pretty big and thick, pretty close and dense, just create a better looking atmosphere in the area as well. That goes all along that road, as you can see in there, and the plantings. I did plant some already on the front of the property, smaller ones, which some have taken, some have died, which will have to be redone. The plantings, the access points are right off the, the main road. When you pull into that road and your first, the first lower lot is right, there's a, probably thirty foot in that area, access to that lot. I did speak to the fire department. He understands that part. The second lot where the building is, there's another thirty foot at least access point, which we've talked about, which he was fine with. And also another access point to the rear storage, like I said earlier, which is probably around thirty feet, twenty-five feet, which the fire department was happy to hear. There will be gates on them to keep, you know, anything out. Talked to the fire department about that. They requested, you know, just put a knock box on, I mean, a box on the building for them to access it, would have, you know, a master key for everything, any locks that they need to get into. So if there ever was, for some reason, whether it be a brush fire in the back, we talked about having access to the back of the property, which I explained to them. Equipment is on the left, the plan, and the dumps on the right. There would be a, an entrance way from here to the back of the property, which is not being used, it's just woods. So if they ever need to get a truck down there, they have access down there. It's, so it's, it's like a lot of storage, basically, you know, and repairs there and storing the trucks there, they're out most of the day. And then, you know, they come back at night, and that's pretty much the basis of what we would be doing there in my business.
Roland, as far as access, would the residential occupants be anyway impaired from the right of way that they have?
No, not at all.
Okay.
The, the right of way right now and the existing access points that I just described to you are pre-existing, they've been there for however long.
How long have you owned the property, Roland?
Six, I think somewhere around seven or eight months now.
Can you describe the daily activity if the permit was allowed?
Uh, yes, so basically, there, the, the guys that work, the employees would pull in, there's a, on your, on your plan there, you can see on the left side of the building, employees would park over in that lot. They'd get in their vehicles and they'd leave for the day. So you wouldn't see anybody pretty much for the day, for the most part, unless they're bringing a container back or picking one up. But that takes maybe, you know, like, they'll be there for like ten minutes, maybe at that most. Other than that, there'll be somebody in the shop doing repairs or painting. Not every day, I can't tell you exactly, it's when we have free, that employee has free time to get in there and do a painting or repair or set up a container for a new customer, they'll be there. So far as daily functions there, I would say that you're probably going to have like two people on site at most during the week. On that, the trucks are usually out on the road doing service.
How many employees do you have?
I have one, two, three, there's six of us, including myself.
What, what happens to the trash or construction debris that you do, transport?
Everything's disposable at either a transfer station, which is one right in, that's River Street, technically, I think North Smithfield, the socket line. Either that, it's all transported to Johnson, ninety percent of, ninety-nine percent is to Johnson.
And what type of debris and or trash do you service as far as removal?
Well, the roll off containers can be anything, it can be anything from a house cleanup, I mean, in a state, you know, somebody passed away, it'd be furniture. You know, household stuff that they're getting rid of on the roll offs. It can be construction, new, new building, building materials. That's, you know, pretty much on the roll offs. The weekly stuff is weekly rubbish, household rubbish, business rubbish, cardboard, whatever a house produces, you know, for trash. So those are the two differences.
Do you have any, do you service the transportation of any hazardous materials?
Nope, we do not deal with any hazardous materials. We don't have any licenses to carry any hazardous material.
And what fire prevention devices might you have on the truck or in the building?
Every truck is equipped in the standard and with DOT, you have to have the fire extinguishers on there. So every truck has a good sized fire extinguisher on there. The building basically has a smoke and, smoke and fire alarm system in it, as well as up to date fire extinguishes. The fire alarm, the, I mean, the fire and smoke and carbon detectors are actually linked through the security system that I have installed there now, which if it does go off, simply say, if the company will notify myself immediately and if I do not respond or whatever, they, or if I do respond and say, I don't know what's happening, they automatically respond to the next, you know, the police, the fire department to, to respond to, to a call there, that the system's going off.
What type of construction equipment would you have on site?
Construction equipment would be, I have two excavators, I have a loader, a dozer, and two skid stairs.
How are they transported?
Truck and trailer.
Are the flatbeds on site?
The, the trailers will be on site, yes.
And what type of vehicle are, is used to transport heavy construction equipment?
We use the, the hook lift trucks that deliver the big roll off containers. They're equipped with air brakes and everything to pull those trailers.
How many dumpsters do you estimate would be stored at any one time?
So we put on there two hundred in that area plus whatever. But it's, it's realistically going to be, I just put that on there for future reference or if there ever was, you know, really slow winter months that we weren't busy, they'd come in, it'd be, you would know it's there. But realistically, during the summertime, there's no roll offs. We're so busy with that in the yard. Usually, you know, if we have two, three come in, they go out the next day. The weekly service stuff, those will be in the yard, waiting for a service. So it depends if we get a new customer that week, two, three, four customers, one, it all depends, but those are stacked, new usually. Or we do have used ones that we refurbish ourselves and we stack those as well, waiting for, to be sent out to service. So, I mean, that's why I put the two hundred in that area plus. It was at one of the, I think, the first meeting, they, somebody had said, it was on my notes, go higher, just so, and, you know, for growth, think of growth. And then I, so I wanted to make sure that was out there. And a couple, couple roll off in the winter, worst case, roll off containers. I'm thinking that you'll see, like we have now, it's probably about twenty-five in the yard right now. And then we have about approximately stacked about thirty containers right now of the weekly service stuff ready to go out. We usually don't stack too much of that stuff because it's very costly and it would be a waste for us to spend that much money to have to sit there not knowing when they're going to go out.
What type of site management do you anticipate as far as landscaping or just site maintenance?
Um, so that would be my guys, on the weekends, we do cleaning, basically, of the shop or we'll do, clean out the trucks from whatever they leave in their cups, drinks, whatever. I, I have weed whackers on site, which I started weed whacking, cleaning up. I did a bunch of cleanup there already from what was there. And, but we have all the tools that we need, that we do ourself, basically, to maintain the property. I did stop doing it once this meeting started because the, at one point, Mr. Barber was too happy with us being there. So I just said, you know what, I'm just going to seize all, anything pretty much going on for a while here that we need to, except for the garage, we have storage, some stuff in there, we stored. So I just kind of put everything on hold until we can get through this and, you know, hopefully move forward.
Were you saying that there was some solid waste there?
There still is that I would like to get rid of, but I didn't plan on doing anything until, like, there's a pile of tires there. There was some wood that was left there, there's like, and I started cleaning it up and I will continue to, you know, but I just don't want to continue until we have an understanding and I get the okay to move forward. Because at that point, you know, I'll be able to move forward and make it worth it.
Do you have any knowledge of there being hazardous materials on the site?
I have no knowledge of that.
Okay. And what activity is taking place on the site as we speak?
I have storage there right now, inside the garage. I have one small trailer I left there. And then inside there right now, I was just, I was fixing, repairing a couple of small containers inside the garage, not doing anything on the outside. Or that's only once in a while when I need one in, in the winter, right now, I'm kind of at a pinch.
Roland, what is the name of the business entity that provides the disposal service?
Brother's Disposal.
Is that your company?
Yes, sir.
Are you the sole shareholder?
Yes.
And what is the name of the company that owns the property?
One Socket Properties LLC.
Are you the sole member?
Yes.
That is a Massachusetts entity?
Yes.
And do you contemplate any subleasing?
No.
Okay. Will there be any other business on site other than Two Brothers or Brothers Disposal?
No, it'll be just brothers.
Are there any administrative offices?
Though, just inside there, we're going to have a small office for, basically, to run the business, yes.
Is there any service to the administrative office as we speak, as far as water and or sewer?
Uh, yes, there's water there, electricity.
Would there be one full-time administrative person on site?
Yes, that's the ultimate goal, is to have one person on site for the office work, yes.
And where would the administrative staff park?
With the rest of the employees on the left of the building, as proposed in the plan.
Do you anticipate any parking on Main Street?
Not on the street, no.
And what type of illumination or lighting do you intend?
There'll be no sign lighting, we don't want any of that. The only lighting is what's currently on the building as I is when I bought it. There's a light for at night to see the building and I, like a spotlight on the building. Whatever spotlights on the building are there now, and I'd like to add one or two more just to, it illuminates everything up, basically, what's there.
Do you anticipate any paving or asphalt?
Um, no, no paving or asphalt, I, I mean, eventually, I'd like to address the road with the residents in the back, I did talk to them. There were some holes in the, in the road, it's kind of in some rough shape to their access too, and my access. So I, I filled it in with some reclaim this summer. I rolled it out for them, I mean, it's just, it's reclaimed, it's ground up asphalt, but if you roll it, packs nice, which was partially there already, but I used some I had to repair the road. And at some point, I'd like to repair some of the road, yes. But I mean, it's not like super addressable right now.
Have you observed any erosion due to runoff?
Um, just, just the road a little bit. That's why it's, the road is like paved, but it has some reclaim from before, you know, so the reclaim just washes away sometimes.
Do you, pardon me, how are the utilities brought onto the site and up to the residential dwellings on the northeast corners of prop, of the plan?
They brought up through my road there, which they have the right of way through power lines and telephone.
Telephone holes, yeah. Okay. And who services that right of way?
So right now, a tenant in the back has been doing it and servicing it. And I told him my chair, certainly, cleaning it up with them as far as plowing in the winter.
Has there been any difficulties with the, when you say tenants, they're not your tenants?
Right.
Do, do you know who the owners are?
I, I'm sorry to say, I don't remember, recall their names exactly. I, well, Mr. Vito and Mrs. Vito are the first house on the left of the road. And then there's another family in the back end of the road. I've talked to them both multiple times, seemed, everything seemed to be good. I told them my intentions, as well as possible future plans of what I'm thinking to do. And everything seemed to be fine. Mr. and Mrs. Vito actually switched their service over to us as well. So we serviced them for their weekly disposal. As being available, you have to have your own company to dispose of your waste. But other than that, you know, we've had no problems, everything's been fine. I made sure I introduced myself right away. So when they saw me or trucks or people there, they knew what was going on because it is kind of like a private road.
Roland, how much more industrial equipment would you expect other than what you just described to the board?
Far as like construction equipment, my excavators and everything like that, there's going to be no more of that because I'm at max capacity because I don't really do that, I kind of do it on the side here and there or for myself on my own multiple properties in the city of a socket as well. So I do my own work there, but that's, I mean, like, they've been sitting now for a while because I haven't had any jobs, they're just, you know, so there'll be no adding of that type of stuff. The containers are where they are, that's why we put that number two hundred, just to cover future growth. As far as the trucks, the trucks on the plan that we have estimated on there, what's there? If we were to grow, grow that, we'd probably just buy another facility and create another, another place at that point because we plan on expanding and want to have eventually multiple spots.
Roland, what is, you mentioned a roll off truck, what is that?
That's the dumpster that picks up the weekly, I mean, the open top containers.
How many do you have?
Roll off, uh, three, three hook trucks.
Excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pop in for just a second because I know that we had some time constraints this evening and I wanted to give our board members a few minutes to answer some questions so that we don't have to continue the hearing again, if you don't mind.
Thank you, I'm done, thank you very much.
Perfect. Justin, Chris, Preston, do you guys have questions?
No, I mean, it seems like they've, I appreciate the plot plan they've done. It obviously is a lot clearer and I know the responses and stuff, the various boards and stuff has also been helpful, so, no, I mean, all my questions, whatever.
I had one question, the building commissioner questions and answer sheet. One of them was lighting for parking entrance, storage area of containers and outside of building. Two questions, can you just like explain kind of like an overview of the lighting of the property? And kind of a follow up to that one. You know, what's the lighting going to be for? Or what's the lighting experience going to be for the people at seventy and eighty Main Street?
Okay, now seventy, eighty is, is that the people that are in the back of my property? I'm not sure of their exact numbers over there.
Yeah, yeah.
So they are so far back that you couldn't even see the light if you wanted to.
Perfect.
They're, they're probably, so where that, where that building is on that plan that you have there, it's an S shape after you go up that driveway, and then they're probably about a quarter mile down on your left. So they're like, they can't, so at their house, if they look down the road, you can't even see that building or nothing.
Okay, is all the lighting going to be on the fifty Main Street?
Yes, parcel building is, yeah, yeah. There's nothing to put on the other side, that's all just woods. And there is a older house building type thing that's there now. I will address at some point and clean up. But basically, yes, I think it'll be a fifty right on the building itself. I want to put a spotlight, which is existing already in the front, so lights up the front, which I know the police officers, I've talked to several of them, they parked there and I leave the light on and they use my driveway all the time, I've talked to them and no problems, I love to have you sit there because, and I want to put one on the left side where the employees would park as well. You know, nothing is shabby, it's just kind of like a dusted dawn light outside your house, so at least you can see what's going on because we have cameras out there and everything now because the building was broken into at one point upon me purchasing it. So now we have surveillance, security, which attacks all the smoke, fire and everything gets directed to the right department immediately.
Okay, thank you, and, and just to comment, you know, I want to thank you for being, you know, thoughtful and deliberate with the diagramming of where the Arbor V-Day are going to be planted. I, I think it does a very nice job of kind of, kind of concealing the, you know, the business.
So when I first bought the place, I actually did the whole front. Some of them unfortunately died and that was the first thing the tenant said to me, like, wow, you're really cleaning up the place, we appreciate it. I said, yeah, I'm doing this. And then when I was approached to do all this, you know, obviously, I, I stopped everything because I didn't want to cause any problems with Mr. Barber at the time. And, but the response from everybody was good, you're cleaning it up, we appreciate it. And then the way I designed it, started doing it, it hit the old wall structure that was there. Well, you know, because I mean, it's just, it's not bad, but it's not the prettiest thing you want to look at. So it's going to be a nicer picture at the end of the day.
Yeah, good job, good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the traffic in and out of the property and how that may or may not affect the, the folks with the shared drive with you?
Yeah. So the, the driveway is wide, so it's almost like you could do two cars, one up, one down. So I'm saying that, but as far as, you know, so pulling in, there would be no problem with another car coming down, trying to get around each other like that. As far as traffic, the trucks that are going to be there that do the weekly service, they come in in the morning, they pick up their schedule and they get in their trucks and they go on for the day. They don't return at all until the end of the day. So technically, the truck leaves, it comes back once, at the end of the day, parks itself in the top lot. That's it, done. The roll offs will be in and out. Not too much, it's mostly going to be storage for there because we do have another facility right now in Cumberland, Rhode Island, where we mainly operate out of. And most of our roll off business is going to stay there because it's more centralized to two ninety-five where most of our roll off businesses, because we'll shoot to Boston from there to ninety-five, we'll shoot to Ward, come on, everything's right there, so we're staying there as well for purposes of having everything close by, for, that's where the roll off is mainly going to stay.
So you have the business that's in Cumberland and this is just going to be like a second location, kind of?
Correct, yes. Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay. Preston, did you have, did we lose Preston? Nope, there he is. Just give him a minute, you know. Jack, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, uh, first off, I wanted to tell the board that uh. Uh, Roland and his counsel been very cooperative. Um, as you know, I sent the plans and to all the departments. And uh, fire, building and Board of Health. Um, commented, um. I have talked to the building commissioner. He is satisfied with Roland's response. Uh. I traded emails with the deputy fire chief and he is comfortable with Roland's response. And then uh, the three of us, Attorney Mitsin and Roland and I went to the Board of Health. And at the end, they were okay and had no further comments. So I think that attests to uh. Their responsiveness to uh, the departments. I do have a couple, really one question. Roland?
Yeah.
I know this is not, you know, a, a walk-in business, but. What are your hours? Is there some way to define what that looks like?
Yes, I think I put those uh, that those are answered on one of the um.
Yeah, probably.
Right, yeah. But I um, so basically the hours are. There's no walk-in, everything is, we mail all our bills, they come in and that, or people pay by credit card online or they pay by, click on and file. So. In my office that we have in Cumberland, to be honest with you, if we've been there for five, six years now. If I've had thirty people walk into that office in that, in that many years, I'd be lucky. Um, but as far as that, that goes, um. Yeah, so the, the uh, hours of operation, Monday through Friday, we operate, um, basically the trucks, uh. They get in for six in the morning and then they're out within by like six fifteen, they're all gone for the day, as far as the weekly service. Um. So that's it, Monday through Friday. Saturday, we work from like seven in the morning and we usually close up by like. I would have to say three o'clock on a Saturday would be very rare, but it's usually by one o'clock is technically what our business always say online. And usually we're out of there. We try to be out of there by noon, basically.
Yeah. Um, my last comment to the board is Roland did tell me about his business in Cumberland. And he doesn't know this, either does his counsel, but I contacted the planner in Cumberland. And asked him about Roland's business and to his credit, he said that um. They've had no issues whatsoever. And in fact, he told me that he canvassed. The departments in Cumberland and no one had any issue with Roland. So I think, or with Valley Disposal, I think that's what you call it. Not Valley, what do you call that?
Brothers.
Brothers, that's it. So um. He, so that's a good thing. So I think. That's uh, all the information I can think of, um. That the board had asked or departments have asked.
Um, Preston, I know you had uh, some communication um, issues just a minute ago, but did you have any other questions?
I didn't have any questions. Um. I'm on board with everything he's doing, as long as they keep the site clean.
If you visit, I mean, you guys, to pre, give you like a preview, get them all to welcome to Cumberland, take a look at us, our site, there's no trash there, there's no nothing. Um, it wouldn't be allowed there either, obviously, you know, but uh, we try to keep everything neat as we can with the space we do have. There, and that was the idea of getting this property here is more space, it's bigger um, to expand.
Um. If there are no other questions, um. And I guess I should ask, we haven't seen anything come in over uh, virtually, have we?
I know. I didn't look. Nope.
All right. Um. Right, so I'll hear a motion to close the hearing?
Take the motion to close the hearing?
I'll second the motion.
All right, um, all in favor, Justin?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Yeah, I say aye. All right, um. So I think the next steps then would be, we'd need to take a vote on um. Approving this special permit and then we'd need to come up with. Our order of conditions. Um, is that correct, Jack?
Yeah, um. I've kinda drafted on my pad here what I would recommend, other than. The boilerplate conditions like, you know, the permit has to be. Recorded and there's an appeal period and that kind of stuff. Um. I, you know, I, I, I think especially after talking to the chair and to others in town hall. The whole basis of this business is the concern about keeping it the way. The applicant's saying it's gonna be. And there's a concern, at least from the previous building commissioner, that this would start getting to look. Like a junkyard. And you know, it creeps that way after years. So, um, I, here's some conditions I'll throw out, um, that there'll be no debris in the empty. Containers, that there'll be no spray painting or paint booth. In the uh, on the premises, that there's no runoff, there's no hazardous material. That there'll be an, uh, what they call a Knox box at the gate for fire department access. That the right of way will be kept clear for all um, users. Uh, that. The amount of equipment will be limited to as stated on the plan. On. Then, then I wanted to, and this is, the hearing is closed, but I wanna put some language in about um. To make sure that the plantings get done. So obviously you're not planting now, you're gonna be planting in the spring. So I'm gonna recommend some kind of date that the plantings will be done, maybe by. June first or July first to give them some time. Something like that.
Jack, do you think that we could have something in there about maintenance of the landscape?
Yeah, and maintenance, yep. Yep. So unless the board or council uh, has any additional. Conditions or modifications to what I just said. Then you could vote to approve with the conditions as stated. And then obviously you're not gonna sign it until you're satisfied with the language in there. And then you're off and running. You'll have uh, twenty-one days to, to craft the decision correctly and I'll have it done. Word will and by the end of the week, but certainly by the beginning of next week.
Um, Madam Chair, we certainly accept the conditions that were just outlined by the uh, the town planner. We have no further conditions to add.
Anyone on the board have any other um? Thoughts that they wanted to mention before we take this to vote?
No, I'm good.
All right. Um, that being said, I'll hear a motion. To approve the special permit for fifty Main Street. With uh, with the conditions as discussed.
I will make a motion to approve the special permit for fifty and fifty-six Main Street with the conditions as discussed.
I'll second that.
All right, um, all in favor, Justin?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
I say aye.
Hey, we did it.
We did it.
Roland, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, counselor, I will also pass the draft decision by you.
I appreciate that, Jack. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, a few um, housekeeping items. We have um, a handful of minutes to approve, I believe.
Two sets you should have.
Yes, uh, one ten and one twenty-four.
Yep. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for January tenth and January twenty-fourth as presented.
All right. And I'll, Preston, you wanna second that?
I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
All right, all in favor, Justin?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
And I say aye. Um, Chris had to hop off, so.
Okay.
Um. I think that's it, Jack. You have an update for us?
Uh, the only thing is I, tomorrow, is I remember telling you guys, um. The next thought with this whole planner issue is that we're gonna look for a grad student as an intern for about a year. And with the promise, if things work out, they could take over and have a job. So tomorrow I have a meeting with the human resource person in Mendon who has the connection at Clark University. And we're kind of start strategizing and hopefully get a meeting. In their um, planning graduate program. And then maybe interview a couple of people that might be interested. I think it's tantalizing. If I was in grad school and I knew I could. Get some real life experience with a job at the end of the road. I think that might, might work.
Yeah, I, I, I think that sounds like a, a pretty good deal and uh, I hope this works out.
I mean, when, when I got out of grad school, I, I was working. In my buddy's automotive repair station for a year and a half. Just to get by, you know, live and. Interviewing all the time with greasy hands, so. So anyway.
Keep us posted. Any other um, applications coming in, anything like that?
No, no. No. Nothing.
All right.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I, I was still on the planner. Application in front of you guys? No, as I told you, I think at the last meeting. I got a query from, I believe, the engineer for Mill, for the new owner of Millville Estates. I gotta. I expect to hear from them very soon and have a real proposal in front of you. But that's all I got.
All right, well. Keep us posted about that if anything comes in and otherwise. I'll hear a motion to end the meeting.
Uh, real quick, um, next meeting. So is that gonna be March fourteenth, second Monday?
Uh, should be February twenty-eighth?
Oh, my bad. Yeah, that's right. I'm skipping.
Yeah, can I ask, um, I'm gonna have a double conflict. Unless you get something, could we, would it be possible to skip that? And I'll work with Pam on that. Um, I mean, if we're just gonna talk about the planning position, I'm not gonna have much and that's all we'll have. Um, perhaps we'll have something, I don't know, but if we don't, I'd like to. Move on, uh, skip that one.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Um, I know at some point, Jack, you and I had, had had a, a conversation about taking a look at some of our um. Bylaws that might need cleaning up and I, I'm imagining at some point, we're gonna wanna have a meeting at least to discuss some of those ideas.
Yeah, and I am guilty as charged. I have, just to prove I'm not completely crazy. I do have a diagnostic right here. You can't see it because it's fuzzy. That um, CMR PC did and I have looked at this and I remember our discussion with the former building commissioner. Um. I owe you that. I promise.
No worries.
It's on my list right here.
Well, I'd rather make sure that we're all there anyway for that type of a discussion too, so, yeah. Um, all right, so let's say that we'll meet on the twenty-eighth if something comes up. Otherwise, the next meeting, um, Justin, you're right, would be March fourteenth.
Okay, sounds good. Then with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor, Justin?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
I say aye. You guys, happy Valentine's Day. Have a good night.
All right, good night, everyone.
Hope you bought flowers or got flowers.